I don't think so. I don't see my red jacket.
Oh, that's true.
I don't even think that was us.
Okay, so there we are. Good evening, folks. I hope that you're surviving the snowstorms that we've had regularly lately. The first order of business this evening on February 10th is the motion to accept the minutes of last meeting?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Present.
Okay. So done. Next on the agenda, we have just in time, JIT, the Highway Superintendent Ed Buckley. Ed, would you please join us?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, winter has officially arrived since my last visit.
For sure.
I have some updates from the Highway Department, and I wanted to report those tonight. We've had a total of 21 snow and ice events that have occurred this season, and 19 of which have been since January 3rd. Four of those were plowable events, and all the plowable events have been within the last two to three weeks. Our certified weather statement indicates we've had 51 inches of snow for Rainham. Our snow and ice budget expenditures to date are projected and estimated to be at approximately $183,000 tonight. That's including salt, fuel, and labor overtime in private contractors. The last storm last night, we, excuse me, we broke a couple of pieces of equipment, a couple of plows, sustained some damage. We were able to repair those. They should be back up and running for the next event. And we had one transmission failure in an older truck that we're not sure if that's going to be running for the next storm, but we do have a spare truck, so we're okay with that. I wanted to talk a minute about public safety and the residents out there, and we've had, well, we have a few things we need to discuss. The parked cars on the streets during the blizzard, we had about 36 parked cars that we had to contend with, parked in various locations that we needed to work with the police department and make phone calls and try to get the vehicles moved. And we're just asking residents to please, in the known event of a snowstorm, to get the cars off the road so that we can clean up as best we can without them in the way. Another issue now is children and/or adults at the edges of their driveways during an event cleaning up, and we understand they need to do their driveway plowing and snowblowing and those kind of things, but it's very dangerous to do it while we're in operation, and we're very concerned about, you know, being close to their driveways with the plows and throwing snow. So we ask that they try to refrain from at least being in that area when we're out plowing. If they see us coming, to please, you know, back up and let us come through because we can't, we try hard to look ahead and see at each driveway opening, but it's difficult, especially if it's smaller children or shorter person with the size of snowbanks we have out there now. So we're very concerned about that. And the last thing is people are putting snow out into the road. There's contractors, plow trucks pushing from driveways and pushing the snow out into the road and across the street. And there is a bylaw that prevents that, and we will look to start enforcing that because it's becoming a safety issue as well. What it does is it bumps the road out in certain locations, and the plow truck comes along and tries to clean a line as close to the mailboxes as possible to open the road up, and then we hit that obstacle of a snowbank, you know, that's been pushed across, and it usually freezes more so than the loose snow if it's pushed up in a bunch like that. So it's like hitting a barrier. So we're hoping that folks will help try to alleviate that if they get the message. The duration of these events in the timeframe, obviously, has been pretty short. I just wanted to report that we've, the three large events that we've had, starting with the blizzard, the crews worked approximately 38 hours straight during the blizzard. And then the last two, approximately 12-inch snowstorms that we had, 23 hours and 27 hours. And this is all within a two-week period, so they've been working pretty hard out there. And I want to thank all of them for their hard work and also the contracted help that we have brought in, and we still have about six weeks to go, and the spring is in 38 days. I don't know if you have any questions for me?
I was not here for this big storm. I hid away for my vacation, but all the reports that I got said thank you to the Highway Department because the roads were passable and no one had any issues. So thank you very much, and extend my thanks to all the other guys.
Mrs. Smith, I think coveted, Ed and I have been in close contact during all of these storms and quite pleased with how Ed is integrating himself into how we expect our roads to be.
Gratifying himself, if you might say better word. Ed, your team has done a super job and passed along our appreciation for the work that they've done. I can say that not just, you know, just easily. I mean, I drove around town after the blizzard, and we were in very good shape compared to other towns in the area, so I think we are on the button. And I also want to back up a space because we didn't have video last week, and I made a comment last week, which I think is equally appropriate this week, and that is that our emergency management team, headed off by Chief Jim Janos, everybody was prepared, you were there, TMLP was there, the board was there, the water district was there, and, you know, we left saying, you know, what comes, we're prepared for it. Fortunately, we haven't had the power outages that we might have had, but still and all, I feel very good about the town's preparation and the implementation of your staff. I really mean they've done a great job, and tell them we appreciate it.
Thank you, and I wish.
Now, on these other issues, as far as residents, you know, being sensitive to the fact that, you know, parked cars in the street, I think we're going to have to be a little bit more, you know, definitive about that if that continues. We're really going to have to take a little bit stronger stance of that because it's tough enough doing this job as it is without having to take that on as well. So I don't know how the board feels, but...
You know, if we have the bylaws in the book, you know, utilize it.
And force it.
Yep.
We try to make contact first, if at all possible.
Sure.
If not, then, you know, we work with the police, and the vehicles have to be towed.
Absolutely. I mean, we want to do what we can to be considerate, but at the same time, a job has to be done for the rest of the community, and the safety is important. So thank you, Ed, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Next, we have, on board, we have our Chief of Police, Jim Donovan, and the Chief has two appointments which he wants to present to the board.
Yes, the first appointment that I'm going to recommend, the candidate is actually still in the police academy up in New Braintree, so he's actually physically there right now. But Joshua O'Brien, he'll complete the academy Friday, the 13th, and we would like to be able to have him go to work on Sunday, I think it is, right away. So I would ask the board, he's come from our reserve list, he's a military veteran, an MP who has been to Afghanistan, excellent candidate, and he's, like I say, in the last week of this 20-some-odd-week program up there in New Braintree. So I would ask if the board could appoint him, hinging on his successful graduation, so that he will start on the 15th of February.
Okay.
I will make that appointment, sir? Go ahead.
Okay, everybody, please.
I was just going to say, based on the fact that he does graduate, which we are sure that he's going to.
Aside from the fact this Friday is the 13th.
As I know, that's...
And more snow.
That's scary. But yes, most assuredly.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So done.
And the second appointment is Ms. Stephanie Baptiste, who just completed 20-some-odd weeks of driving back and forth from Rainham to Redding. Due to the shortness of the lack of availability of police academies, Stephanie has muscled her way through the commute that goes around, over, or through the city of Austin for the last 20-some-odd weeks. Stephanie's been with us for many years, filled a bunch of roles with us, dispatching, part-time, not the least of which she has worked in undercover capacity for us, and now, like I say, she's been successful in completing the police academy. She's also continued a family tradition, a long, proud family tradition of her stepbrothers, her stepfather, everybody has served. So I would recommend Stephanie be appointed full-time.
I certainly will recommend that she be appointed.
Appointed, yeah.
To avoid any potential conflict, as Jim mentioned, I would abstain, but that abstaining is not a reflection on the candidate, but rather to give deference to the conflict of interest law.
Well, I will certainly second a motion by Marie Smith and approve the appointment as recommended by the Chief.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Unfortunately, Stephanie Samley couldn't make it, but we do have our designated photographer for the official photographs.
Yep.
Madam Clerk could come forward?
Yep, Assistant Clerk, yep.
Mr. Chairman, one second. Jim, if you could, just for the audience at home, can you explain what these two positions fill? It's been a while since you've...
This is a vacancy created almost two years ago, I think. Stephanie's with the retirement of Sergeant Wesco, and Josh O'Brien will be filling the vacancy that was created when Mike Haggerty retired.
Yep.
And again, these aren't new positions, these are replacing retired positions for everybody at home.
Yes.
Yep, excellent point. Good.
Ready? Wait right here. Please wait for the police officer to turn around to the best of your abilities.
Thank you, Pam.
Can you shake hands? You have to hold it, wait for it.
Well, no.
With this, actually, both candidates, they now go into several weeks of field training, which is overseen by Sergeant Petrus, and Officer Baptiste is with Officer Fowler right now for the next six or seven weeks. It's a pretty intense program. It's not just field training, it's field training and evaluation, where you're scored every day. And they also begin a one-year probation period, which is standard with civil service police officers. Because of all the storms, I missed my January meeting with the board, so just real quick, in the month of January, we logged 1,191 incidents with the police department. We charged 62 people with crimes. The snowfall, obviously, is a big part of the story over the last several weeks. The SUVs that we were able to get through town meeting with the help of the board have obviously been huge. Our operations in these storms have been almost seamless because of those vehicles. Not only the traction, but as we all know with the snowbanks and being able to see up and over them and getting the lights up and over them so people, the traffic can also see the vehicles. As I said, the weather has affected most of our business in the last several weeks. Luckily, the crashes haven't been too bad. The travel ban was effective on that one storm, and the timing of that storm also worked out, you know, most people were home by the time it really started to roll, and then with the travel ban, it kept people off the roads. The danger time is more now, you know, with the inconsistent road conditions, where you go from that nice paved surface to maybe hard pack ice with the big snowbanks on the side, so that's where we're at with that. Also, in January, we dealt with something that we haven't seen, but nationally, it's become quite a problem, was human and sex trafficking. We worked with the Fall River Police Department, and we were successful in locating a missing 17-year-old that was being sex trafficked from a hotel here in town. We were able to return her to where she legally resides. We arrested the 20-year-old that was pimping her and recovered drugs and ammunition. So that's something that we hadn't seen and we're seeing, but we're also preparing for it. Every single officer is slated to be trained on that topic at in-service training this year, so...
Wow.
That's all I have for January.
I'm shocked because it's like, this is Rainham.
Yes.
You know, you don't...
Unfortunately, this was a Fall River-based operation, and the teenage girls involved with it there were much younger than 17. They were early teens.
Yeah.
And the parents literally had no idea that the children were involved in that type of activity.
How terrible, how terrible that is. Keep a good eye on that.
Yes.
Make sure that everybody is okay.
We shall.
Joe?
No.
Well, you know, what's really very, very impressive is the amount of training that your offices have to go through in all of these various areas such as this, training, and so it's obviously very challenging and...
The breadth, the variety.
The variety, thank you. I was looking for, I mean, the variety is incredible, so, you know, thank you for that. And also, the arrest you made by actually checking the traffic, you might want to talk about that, I thought that was very interesting.
Yeah, Officer Clark, actually, made that arrest. He had gone looking. We learned that Mr. O'Donnell had a warrant. We were actively looking for him. Officer Clark saw him operating a vehicle and stopped him right out here, just past Town Hall, actually, and arrested him on a warrant for falsely reporting a crime in Attleboro, but also for violating his probation for illegally tapping into the pole here on Tidicket Road in Rainham in 2012.
I think that was great police work to catch him on the fly, driving. It says to me, that's a pretty, that's impressive, so thank you for that, and thank your team for that, too, Chief.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So we have a public hearing next, Central Dodge, and we have two gentlemen representing Central Dodge, and you may want to speak to this, Joe, because...
So I had requested this hearing due to the car carriers, again, being stuck on 44. In the past eight years, we've had all dealerships in reminding them that A, Route 44 is a state highway, B, as part of your licensing, you're not allowed to unload on 44, and C, to make sure you have entrances conducive to car carriers being able to get in. And over the course of at least the past three years, this has happened five or six times, I made contact with your dealership to let you know we were going to be requesting you in here before a hearing, and I asked you at that time to come up with a proposal to alleviate the situation in the future. And so at that point, if the chairman's okay with it, I would ask that they come up and present from here.
Sure.
Hi. I'm Richard Caddo, you see?
I'm Adam Silver.
We know it's a problem, it's been a problem actually since they did the road over 10 to 12 years ago. We've sent letters to all the carriers requesting not to make a turn across 44. It's a problem because they use so many different drivers and there's so many different carriers. Earlier last year, on the east side, we removed the asphalt and brought down the grade by three or four inches, and we plan on doing it on the westbound side. We were going to do it last fall, but the contractor couldn't do it before the weather came in, so we are going to try to reduce the angle that the parking, if you, you know what I'm talking about, when you pull up there, it's a grade, that's been there, if you're right, for the last eight or 10 years. We apologize for the disruption on the traffic. We've actually gone out on 44 several times. He's ran out there and grabbed the drivers before they make the turn, asked them to go down and turn around, but it's a constant problem. Again, they're not our employees, but it's, we feel obligated because they are delivering to our business. So hopefully, by the spring, we can get the contractor in there and move that grade by four inches, and that should alleviate most of the problem. It's still an issue, but that issue originally arose when they widened 44 from two lanes to four lanes, and the elevations that were given to us, because we were doing the parking lot over at the same time, and the elevations that were given to us by Rhodes, I think was the construction company, were incorrect, because we called the state right away when we saw the angle of the trucks coming up, because they happened immediately. And they referred us back to Rhodes, and Rhodes said, you know, whatever. They were signed off on it by the state, and they kind of left us with that problem. And for a while there, we had notified all the companies, and it wasn't a problem. Recently, over the last two or three years, it's been an issue. So again, we're well aware of it, and I cringe when I see the truck come up, and sometimes they'll come up and they get out of it themselves. I don't know how they do it, but they'll just pull themselves up. Occasionally, they get stuck, and it creates a traffic issue on 44. And Adam can speak to the letters.
Yeah, we have sent, we've sent them before, the certified letters, but we actually, I don't have a copy for everybody, but I have a copy for the board of a certified letter that we are trying to direct the car carriers to actually not even pull in that way, to go down 44, turn around, and come back the other way to pull in, because they never have a problem if they come in the other way.
Have you, in the meantime, between now and whenever you get that slope adjusted, used one of the other two entrance ways that you have, neither of which are as steep?
We only have two entrances. The third entrance is in the property and exits, it's always closed.
Okay.
But the two entrances, the one that's on the eastbound side, we changed the slope, and they seem to get in that way a little bit easier.
Yeah.
On the westbound side, that's the one that's going to be a little bit more of a problem, I think, so he's going to have to try to get it down four inches or five inches. But it's quite a slope. And originally, when we came down there, it's been, we've been there for 16 years, we never had a problem pulling in because the road was higher. When they came in and made it four lanes, for some reason, they dropped it.
Yeah, I don't know. Well, I personally, and if the board has any comment, I appreciate this, and I'm glad that you took the time to make some effort to address...
It's a constant effort.
Yeah, we're definitely not overlooking it, and we also, the letters have gone on before, and that's why I was explaining, when we chatted on the phone for a minute, that fortunately, they don't listen all the time, so we're going to change the elevation to make sure that it doesn't happen.
Hopefully, that'll do it if we can change the elevation. I'd like to get five or six inches, but it's difficult to get that slope.
So if I understand correctly, just to kind of put it in perspective, you're looking for this change in the slope to take place this spring when the weather breaks, and you feel that that will make the situation, alleviate it and make the situation...
I have a whole idea about it.
Yeah?
Well, on the other side, when we lowered the elevation on the other side, a lot of people, even on the other side, were bottoming out, just regular cars coming in, and that's alleviated it altogether. But I mean, we're having that, we had some of our own customers coming and getting damaged to their car because of the slope that was on the other side.
Yep.
We've changed that already and helped on the other side, so between that and the letter, we'd still like them to go down 44 and turn around and come back because they've never had a problem getting in if they come in from the other direction.
Coming in from the eastbound side, it's not a problem.
It's number one, it's been a problem. But just when they make that left turn across 44, which is a dangerous turn to make anyways with the tractor trail, so I don't even know why they attempt that, but they're truck drivers.
Any other comments?
No, I mean, I'm glad, like I said, to see progress because the alternatives after that are going to be fines, and they're going to be moving towards what they do in Walpole, there's no left turns at all along Route 1. And I don't think you want to experience either one of those, and I don't want to experience my main business corridor shut down, and three of my offices there for two hours. So working with us, I hope we can get to that resolution expeditiously, and I hope we're not back here next year with you saying it still hasn't been done.
No, definitely in the spring, the grade is being done. We didn't know if that would even do it on the eastbound side, so we, instead of doing both at the same time, we said do it and see if it improves it. It did, and I contacted the contractor and said do the other side, and he just never got to it. And I could have tried and used a different contractor, but he did a pretty decent job on that side, so I'm going to wait until the spring.
No, and that's fine, I just, again, I want to make sure we're moving towards some type of a resolution, because I think the board agrees with me that tying up three police officers for two hours is not appropriate or acceptable.
We don't disagree.
All right, great, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
Yes, you too. Okay, board, any new business?
None, none, sir.
Okay. Completion of old business?
None.
Okay. Tom, let me...
Last week, the board set a tentative date for a special town meeting, mainly for Walmart and the Broadway Center Street Lights, but I had Mr. Charbonneau do some checking to see how far along Walmart was in their engineering and their et cetera. So according to Mass DOT, Walmart's plan for the signals has not been approved by them as yet, and further, Walmart's engineers have not gotten back to John. So if the plans change at all, the articles would have to be changed, so at this point, I'm recommending that we cancel the March special town meeting, and they'll have to wait till May.
Randy, do you need a vote on that?
I think so, just to make it official.
Motion to cancel last week, last week's scheduling of a special town meeting in March 2nd.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on the budget deadline is this Friday for all budgets with the state budget deficit, and it affects not only on towns' budgets, but the school district budgets. The money will be tighter this year, I think, than the past few, so we're asking departments to adhere closely to the guidelines issued by the Finance Committee. Regarding health insurance rates, the SMHG Steering Committee is recommending a 3% rate increase to its health insurance rates for FY '16. This is in contrast to the Cape Cod Health Group, which is a very large municipal health group, and other public entities which are proposing 9% and greater increases, so we're pretty happy with that. Upcoming next selectman's meeting, we have Dave Wulker coming in regarding the SUC, Annual SUC gravel permit renewal. I have mediation scheduled for Tuesday in Boston. Board of Directors meeting February 25th in Norton, and I almost forgot, Monday is President's Day, and Town Hall will be closed. Thank you.
Snow days. Thank you, Randy. Any selectmen's report?
Nothing, sir.
I just have one very brief tying to Mr. Buckner's report on health insurance rates. We've all been involved for a number of years now internally in terms of negotiations with all of our unions, and as of last year moving forward, just so the public's aware, outside of participating in the SMHG, we've also entered into agreement with every union and all new employees moving forward to be paying a higher health insurance rate.
Yes.
So that's one of the things internally that we've been working towards for a number of years, and it wasn't done without the cooperation of all of our employees, every union, and obviously any new department heads we've hired since last July. So that's something we've done, again, internally in Rainham to make sure we keep costs down, recognizing that health insurance is probably the least stable of our budget line items outside of snow. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, correspondence. I have here a letter to the board from the Acting Secretary of the North School Committee, and the letter reads as follows: "The North School Committee held their first meeting on January 21st, 2015. At that meeting, the committee voted unanimously to send a letter to the board to respectfully request no action be taken by the Board of Selectmen on North School until the North School Committee reports its findings to the 2015 Annual Town Meeting." How are you predisposed?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that was our intention anyways.
Yep.
That was the intention of it, that we were not going to do anything until they came forward with some resolution.
And they're asking that we support their recommendation or their proposal to make this presentation at the annual town meeting.
Well, I think with the clarifying point, it comes to this board first.
Right.
As Mrs. Smith's original intent was.
It would come here first.
Yeah, at the end of March.
Yep.
Okay, good. From Serpent, basically, when you cut through all of this, Serpent is requesting that we elect, representing the community, not elect, but reappoint a person to the South Coast Rail Task Force. It's a position that Dan Andrade has held, and I'm asking the board to make a motion to reappoint him to that position.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.